...about giving us the opportunity to hire an extra teacher that's outside of what we budgeted for based on where the registrations fell. So we'll take any questions if you have them.
Questions?
I'm pretty uncomfortable with these large, the couple of large remote sections. I'm curious about, back to Kelly's presentation with respect to if a decision was made by the board to ask for additional remote teachers depending on how your numbers turn out ultimately. Is the 284,000, that two and a half percent? Is that money already, have you been working on budgeting for it already? Or is it still a pool that's unassigned that we could potentially use for funding additional hands if we need them?
Well, right now, for funding sources, we have to let a couple of things sort out because there's potential that some of these costs are associated with special ed which would have been unpredictable, which means that we could use the special ed trust fund. We have access to the contingency fund which is in the budget every year that we could go to for staffing. And then with the board's permission, the budget committee's permission, we could go into that 284,000. But again, you know, we're just not exactly sure today where our dollars are because things are coming in fast and furious with regards to PPE and some adjustments were made to the physical plan. We do feel we're in good shape. The 284,000 is an increase of about, about 140,000. It's 140,000 more, so we do think we have the flexibility. And I think, again, I support Gina's recommendation to reduce some of those sizes. So if the board was to authorize us to hire teachers to meet, you know, what we deem to be appropriate class sizes, we would do that. Because in some instances, we're right near the ed specs and I would probably just put an educational para or another person on that Zoom. So physically, you'd have two people. Many times, especially with the smaller children, when they're doing Zoom, the parent is right there with them. So it's, 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 you have a large number of paras assisting that teacher in some way, shape, or form. But I do think we're going to need some staffing adjustments. We are making the same recommendation tomorrow night in Brookline and we'll be talking to the co-op board later this month for some of their coverage issues.
Andy, maybe you can just clarify something for me relating to the retained fund balance. So if we were, and Kelly, you kind of touched on this. If we found ourselves in need of accessing those funds, we have a public hearing for that?
Yep.
With the budget committee? But are we seeking approval from the budget committee? Or is that more of the board, the school board disclosing to the budget committee?
They would actually approve it.
They would have to actually approve it?
They could do it if they're me. We wouldn't have to do it necessarily here. So we can have two different presentations.
Okay, so, but I guess my feeling is, is they could not approve it.
I suppose that's possible always, but the only, the one time that we did use it before, they did approve it.
Okay. All right, just, just was wondering.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, as always, the first goal would be to go through the operating budget. The second goal would be to go to the contingency. And at that point, start to have a discussion. Now, we will make the budget committee well aware of that thought now so it's not a surprise to them in the spring.
Mm-hmm.
But again, we also don't know what's going to take place with, you know, long-term subs, illnesses for staff, things that would happen in a normal year.
Yeah.
And I think we have a potential for a few returning leaves this year as well.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So you'd be looking for us to approve the potential at your discretion for hiring to meet the numbers, yes?
Correct.
And with the option of possibly utilizing an instructional para. I'm curious about, if there's any knowledge at this point about hiring prospects. You know, I know that it's late in the year and in unusual circumstances. And, yeah, what are the hiring prospects, I guess, if you know that? And what is our, what would be our fallback plan if we are unable to hire in either capacity?
First of all, the process would be to put out the anticipated opening. I think I would be correct to say that the application pool would not be huge. But at the same time, there are still a number of teachers out there that are not employed.
Okay.
Because we have done some hiring in other districts and the applications have come in. So I think there's the potential for that. If for some reason we simply couldn't get somebody, we would start the year with a large section in remote.
Okay. And, and maybe that you don't know the answer to this. Would the intent be, or would it be, you know, decided once the hiring, would it be that we'd be shifting one of the current in-classroom teachers to the remote position? Or would it be hiring for a remote position?
We would allow the building principals to go through the process and then make a decision.
Okay.
We may approach some staff members and ask them if there's a preference.
All right, so it wouldn't be marketed as a remote teacher position or a remote para position?
It may, it would be advertised as both to see if we get a larger pool because there may be a teacher out there, let's use a retiree, for example, who may like the idea of teaching remotely if they, if they could work from home.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, and sorry, one more thing with what has been discussed about the kids that are at home. I'm not clear on this because I selected in-school for my kids. Is the expectation that there is a parent or an adult with the child at the Zoom? Is that, is that an expectation?
No, it is not. I just know from what we encountered in the spring, many of our parents, especially the little ones, were with them during their Zooms.
Many are, but it's not a requirement of the remote learning?
Especially as you get into grade four, five, and six. I think many of those children are more than enough independent. And I probably said the same about many third graders. It's just the little ones. And I think as time goes on, there's a greater comfort level as well with the login and the procedures with the teachers.
Okay, thank you.
And just with these numbers right now, we're really only looking at there being a need for adding a single teacher because we only really have one remote section that's looking on the large side that wouldn't be covered by current staff, correct? That's just the fifth grade level?
So it's one or two, to be honest. We're looking at grade five and we're looking at grade three in particular. Grade one can be covered with current staffing. Grade three, we want to just verify room size and look at all the rooms at HPS to select not just typically the grade three wing, but what classroom can accommodate the number of students who might be coming to third grade? To make, you know, to make sure that we're going to maintain what we promised, which was a six feet of distancing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
And grade two, we're at 25 remote as well, yes? With two missing?
Yes. And so, you know, once again, that 25, if that becomes 27, that is higher than what we recommend. At the same time, if I take a look at my 63 in-building students and divide that into three sections, that would also be space-wise higher than what is desirable for grade two. So really, a lot of these decisions come down to those, even though it's only 3% of the registrations that we're waiting on, these are going to definitely impact our staffing and our staffing needs.
So we don't necessarily need to make a final decision tonight?
Well, the decision I would ask you to make is to probably approve the potential for two additional teachers.
Okay.
Giving us the ability to do the anticipated openings, get that process going. And then we would provide you an update because, to your point, a couple of things may change.
Right.
You know, there are some people that I think are reflecting on their decision and may decide to homeschool. Because for some families, the idea that we're going eight to 2:30 is difficult on their family schedule because of mom and dad Zooming. So we've had some families select the homeschool option because that gives them the ability to work around their, their schedules and their Wi-Fi and all the different things that take place with remote.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions relating to registration?
I do have a question about, maybe it's not appropriate to the specific topic exactly. You can let me know. Is there a way to utilize, if we can find them, substitute teachers specifically to assist in any of this? I know substitute teachers is a giant difficulty, but I'm just curious if the market will shift because of the way COVID is impacting employment. To, you know, for example, I'm sorry, I'm just babbling a little bit, but in the building, we can have some of our, in a classroom, we can have some students working in the classroom on something while another part of that classroom is elsewhere doing something else, specials or wingtime or whatever, because we have multiple hands doing multiple things. And I'm wondering if that, in some fashion, can be mimicked on the online, you know, the remote learning plan so that maybe we can, you know, I'm just spitballing here and just wondering if those kinds of, if those kinds of things have been considered and are possible.
Well, I think with the remote learning, the role of the substitute is, is difficult. It's not like the traditional setting. And I think the other thing, since you mentioned it, staffing in general will be difficult.
Yeah.
You know, we'll be, I think, with a couple hires in good shape to open. But I would almost say tonight that parents would have to understand that in some ways, this will almost be like a snowstorm in terms of if I had X number of staff members call in sick or unable to perform, there may be an issue with us opening and we have, we might have to, on a dime, go to a, a remote option for that particular day.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean substitute, I meant para, para educators. That's what I meant, so, okay.
Right. But I think the, you know, we, we did raise our substitute pay.
Right.
And I think there is a definite role. The other thing we're going to be looking at, we have a person making some phone calls because a number of parents have reached us, out to us, looking to see if they could assist.
Right.
And we had put in our plan that there may be a need for what I'll call critical volunteers. And critical volunteers may be a staff member who has a daycare issue on a particular day to either substitute in that classroom or for that staff member to have some flexibility.
Right.
So it's, as much as we have a very solid plan, it has so many moving parts that to predict exactly what it will look like is going to be difficult. And it's, it's not just us. I was on a Zoom call today with superintendents across the state. We're all facing the same thing. Where here, we're actually hoping that a couple of our neighbors are remote, so maybe we'll be able to get more substitutes because they won't have that need. So we'll see what happens, but it is a work in progress.
On that, on that note, this is a question that I had that kind of applies. If a remote teacher is ill and unable to teach, is there a remote substitute or does that classroom close? I know that it-
The, well, from a technical standpoint, all information would be posted on Google Docs and through that system. And the teacher would put an away message on that they are sick for that given day. But to be able to have access to a remote sub and I wouldn't want to give those addresses and emails and all that confidential information. So that room would be kind of closed, but that away message would come in the morning and it would be, in some ways, the same as if a, a teacher was out here. There'd be work assigned. And the difference would be at the end of the day, it's just a parent containing the work and submitting it when the teacher returns.
Okay.
This is slightly off-topic, but do we know of the, what percentage of the in-building students will be taking the buses? And are we, is there any opportunity to look at the transportation contract if we're not fully utilizing the buses? So we, I don't know that number off the top of my head, but we do have that number. And it's different for the morning and for the afternoon, but the runs are staying the same. So there, there might be buses with not very many students, but we're not trying to move multiple students and decrease the number of total buses that we're running.
Okay.
So the cost, as long as we're open, is going to stay the same.
Got it. Okay.
And again, I thank parents because a number of parents have opted to drive. But when Gina provided me the numbers, there were good enough numbers that will force us to run buses every day for students who wouldn't be here otherwise.
Okay. And keeping in mind that, because that the buses act as emergency transportation and they have to be able to seat everyone to evacuate buildings in the event of a bizarre episode Candy might remember, I'm sure, about 10 years ago or more, when there was a water problem all of a sudden in the middle of the day and every kid in both buildings had to leave. Unannounced, it was a sudden something, I forgot what.
So we have, we are going to have the same types of, you know, early emergency dismissal?
You just go that mic? Just some people at home.
Yes.
No, the people at home.
Hi, Candy Fowler. I just want to address that we are still going to have our early emergency dismissal because any of those situations can happen. If you're remote, you won't really have that situation, right? But if you're in the building and now there's a water down and we've got to get buses and cars before it floods, we would definitely put into that plan, that's your emergency dismissal. So it may be. But I will also say that, you know, I've had a few parents call me up and say, what happens if I need to put my kids on the bus? And it's an emergency and I've got to go to work. Are my kids just going to be driven by if I didn't sign up? I'm like, no, we're not driving by any children. We're picking them all up. So to Gina's point, we're keeping the bus the same. Like, can you imagine? Like, that would be really scary, so.
Right, so the number of seats-
The bus driver has a short name, not driving by anybody.
Enrolled in the district, not the number of students that are in the building on any given day.
We want to make sure we are in every situation, you know, just keeping our kids safe.
Oh, one other question, sorry. You might not know the answer, but I know there's a lot of people in the community that are wanting to know, what is the timing of communicating teacher assignments? We will share teaching assignments as soon as we get all the information about registrations because, as you see, so much of this is dynamic. We don't want, just as we didn't want to in the spring, like we typically do, release those teacher assignments. We don't want to release them and then say, just kidding, we had to split a section.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, as soon as we have solid numbers, then we're going to share that. But I would say, we might be looking at the beginning of September. We are planning on having each classroom teacher reach out to their classes and do a Zoom prior to September 9th to do a meet and greet, whether it's you're a remote student or an in-person student. For the in-person students, it would be still Zoom, but the teacher would be showing you the classroom space and just giving, you know, a little personal connection prior to arrival since it's been quite some time since we've been in school for this, for our students. So I would say early September.
Thank you.
Yeah.
On that same vein, a lot of folks have tied in a supply list question as well, even if that could be a preliminary one for folks before teacher assignments. Do we know if that's possible?
So funny, you should mention that. Both Paul and I are planning on sending out an email tomorrow reminding everyone, register your kids. That, you know, our goal is to hopefully in the next, you know, end of, end of next week, to be able to share lists if we have them. But here are the class lists regardless of what teacher you have. So making those unified lists so that everyone can start getting excited about school shopping because we know we are going to be excited. We love to buy those new things. So again, hopefully tomorrow, if not Friday.
Ask and you shall receive, thank you.
And the materials you would need for in-person and remote with just a couple of exceptions are the same. Because we're going to be working very closely with our remote teachers and our in-person teachers. So we're on the same page, utilizing same materials.
Yeah, great.
Last call for questions on registration. We're all good?
Those are all great questions.
I'd like to, yeah, they were great questions, I appreciate them. Updates on reopening plan?
Sure. So it's included in the board packet with some updated language regarding masks and daily symptom monitoring. So I would like to read it so that it's part of the minutes. I wrote that it's co-op mask language because this is the language that was approved by the co-op board, but they did include Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District where there's a line. So if it needs to be different by district, we can do that and identify three separate mask language policies. But it says, "Students and staff in the school district will be required to wear an administrator-approved face covering when physical distancing guidelines, as determined by the Centers for Disease Control (CDC), are not able to be achieved. Teachers will build in periodic breaks that allow for students to physical distance per CDC guidelines and remove their face coverings. Student exemptions to the face covering guidelines will take place as part of a formal IEP 504 or IHPT meeting. All students and staff will be required to wear a face covering when riding the bus, entering, exiting the building, arriving to or leaving a classroom, engaging in small group classroom activities, walking in the hallways and other common areas as determined by the building principal, and when asked to do so by an employee of the school district." So those are the updates. It maintains the intention of being masked at all times, but it definitely allows for periodic mask breaks. We have secured two 20-foot-by-20-foot tents to be installed at Hughes and then two additional ones for the primary until Thanksgiving, I believe, so that teachers have a covered place to bring their students to outside. And that would be a perfect time for a mask break as well as outdoor recess. And so those, there are definitely times when students will be allowed to remove the mask. But at any time, if an adult asks a student to put it on, they will comply. That, that's what this language is, is saying. Keep in mind, if we have our students physically distanced in a classroom, and I'm going to say first grade, for example, we're six feet apart, but one student gets up to sharpen his or her pencil, we've now walked through that six foot of separation. So even though the classroom is set up for that, walking down a, an aisle, thank you, I was going to say hallway, but walking down an aisle or, you know, if you have to get up to use the restroom, same thing. We've just violated that six feet, so masks on absolutely if there was, in fact, a break at that time. So that is, like I said, the language that was recommended by both our advisory committee and this is what was approved at the co-op board meeting last week.
Gina, you're saying that students, let's talk about that first grade class you mentioned, are seated, seated in their physically distanced seats.
Yes.
And they will be allowed to remove their masks if nobody's moving and nobody's left their seats.
It's determined by the teacher. So if a mask break is allowed at that time, there might be classrooms that are 100% mask-zoned and that'll be, everyone would be aware of that prior. But those students will still get their mask breaks by going outside to a location that is determined that this is, now we're at a mask break.
I'm sorry, I need to be absolutely clear about this. I beg your pardon. It is possible, parents, I think, would want to know this. If I've understood this right, what you're saying is it is possible that I could walk into a classroom, because I'm magic and walk through classroom walls, and I could see a classroom of 16 first graders all seated in their physically distanced seats and allowed to remove their masks all at once? That is a possible scenario for a mask break?
That is a possibility if the distancing guidelines can be achieved and the, and the school district employee has determined that it is a short, limited mask break. That being said-
If anybody gets up or anybody needs to move from their physical distancing, then everyone's got masks on. But it is, which, the scenario that you're painting is that there can be a moment or a period of time when, when all the students are physically distanced by proclamation because they're seated where they've been told to sit and you guys have measured it all out and they're not wearing their masks at all? For a minute, for five minutes, for some period of time? Is that correct?
That is a possibility when the school district employee in that room has determined that it is a mask break.
Okay, thank you.
Gina, I'm sorry to harp on this, but I picked up on the language of that if the distance and guidelines are not met, so if the kids are seated six feet apart-
Yep.
Then the distance and guidelines are met.
Correct.
What would prevent, if, what would prevent it from not being a mask break but just being non-mask wearing? If the distancing guidelines are met? Do the kids have to wear masks beyond just a mask break?
Yes, they do. They do, so, and that's why-
And I don't, I just don't hear that in the language at, at this time because, because if the distancing guidelines are met, then why do they have to wear a mask?
Well, I think the intent of the language is to allow the flexibility that maybe we're opening up the school year and it's a very hot day. And it may not be the entire class. Like, right now, we're all sitting with six feet of distance and Rob doesn't have his mask on, which is fine. And you had to take yours off to talk, so that gives that teacher that flexibility. But I don't, I don't see us opening this way. I think the language was with the goal of trying to get through the whole year. And if things get better, there's potential for more freedom. If things don't, there's the potential to end up fully remote again.
I would just add that the critical piece to this is when asked to do so by an adult.
Okay. Yeah, and that was the other thing that troubled me a little bit. I think because I am imagining a scenario of a child feeling singled out. I suppose like if they looked viracy, I don't know, whatever. Like, would it be the case that one child in the room is asked to put a mask on?
No, the case-
I wouldn't expect that it would, but it just, the language to be allowed for that.
So, you know, through all of this, we've been talking about educating our students, educating our adults. You know, we're all learning new things every day, new guidelines, new recommendations. And a piece of this is learning how to tolerate a mask. That's definitely a piece that some kids, just based on how often they've gone outside, how often, how strict their home is with mask wearing or not mask wearing. So that there's an education piece. So there's going to be a lot, just as we say to especially our younger learners, hands to the side or, you know, appropriate behavior in circle time, appropriate behavior when walking in a line from classroom to, to where we're going to have lunch. You know, we just have to learn what, what we do with our body. We have to learn if we are touching other people. So this is just another piece of instruction, how to wear a mask and a reminder, class, right now, we're, we're wearing our masks.
Right, I guess that was the clarification I was looking for. Like, are we going to tell one child to put their mask on? Or is it like, we're, we are putting masks on now?
We are putting, and it's part of the classroom community that you develop in the first six weeks. And that's why, to be honest, that's why I found it so critical to attempt an opening because it's that relationship, that community, that is easier, in my opinion, to build when you're in person and you have those connections. And so all of these, you know, rules and regulations, but it's really just how to be a respectful and mindful citizen. And the mask wearing is to protect others. And so we want to protect each other.
This mask language, if-
Tammy, I'm just going to tell you that in the conversations I've had with staff, we've had some, you know, voluntary meetings, how's it going, checking in because I'm still working on building rapport and trust. I think we're all wanting to be as safe as we can, to stay in the building as long as we can. And so we're really feeling right now, what's the safe thing to do? Take your mask breaks outside where there's lots of air? Maybe keep your masks on when you're inside? And no one wants to be anything but caring and loving when kids are going to make mistakes. If there's defiance, then that's a different thing. But we have really great kids here and I think they want to stay in school too. So I think everyone's going to, like, choose to do the right thing, so.
100% agree with you. Do not have any concerns about defiant or misbehavior because after all, they're kids and that's just the norm is that kids are learning. I'm not worried about that particular piece of it. I'm concerned with the syntax of this language. Students and staff in the Hollis School District, it says a blank here on this form for each district, so I'll just speak for us, of course, will be required to wear an administrator-approved face covering when physical distancing guidelines, as determined by the CDC, are not able to be achieved. So the way this is written is that essentially, we're starting from the assumption that we are in a static physically-distanced position like this, like these chairs are, in a stable, stationary place. And, and, and in that state, it is safe not to wear a mask. Is what this language implies. place, and in that state, it is safe not to wear a mask, is what this language implies. It implies that as long as we're physically-distanced in a classroom, the mask-wearing is not the It's the way it's written, and I'm very, very uncomfortable with that. I agree with anyone who says the kid, most kids, I know there are many sensory issues, behavioral issues, I recognize that completely. But I do believe most kids can learn quickly and over time to get more comfortable with masks, maybe not perfectly comfortable. I understand it's a work in progress, I understand all the caveats. But I feel very strongly that we in Hollis and Brookline, but also in Hollis, are very fortunate to have an extraordinarily low COVID level. And I want to do everything we can do to preserve that good community health, because what happens to one kid in our building can be parlayed out into dominoes, as we all know from reading the news. So while I'm not afraid of COVID, I'm afraid that we might take for granted our great good fortune, and I don't like this language in the sense that it implies by its English, just its syntax, that the default is that social distancing or physical distancing, and I'm glad it says "physical distancing," thank you, is in and of itself protective, which I personally feel is not necessarily a, you know, it's like, it's not 50/50, it's 51/49. And in my mind, the 51 is on COVID, not on the physical distancing as the most dynamic factor. So to me, I would like to see this language be more on the side of, the default is mask-wearing, and where physical distancing and the adult, the responsible adult's judgment, you know, am I making sense what I'm asking for? The tipping point, in my opinion, is on the wrong side of where the default should be.
That mask breaks will be allowed when physical distancing is...
The default is that we're all wearing masks, and there will be those occasions. So, I'd like to see, "will be required to wear an administrator-approved face covering, period, when physical distancing guidelines, as determined by the CDC, are able to be achieved, an adult in the room can choose whatever language you want after that." Does that, I mean, I'm just proposing that, it would make me feel much more comfortable that our guidelines in the language establish that mask-wearing is the protective action, not the physical distancing. The way it's written here, the physical distancing is the protective action, and the masks help that. And I don't, that's my view, my personal view is the opposite. Thank you.
I would be a little hesitant to add or retract from what the CDC guidelines are. So I'm more of a, you know, whatever the CDC guidelines say, if they say one or the other or both are equally adequate, I'm not comfortable adding additional judgment to those guidelines, because none of us are qualified. So I'm, I just want to be careful.
100% agree, Rob, but the CDC is extremely unclear on any of this. They, all of it is guidelines, none of it is prioritized. My reading of it, I know you guys have been much, much more attuned to specifics, and especially the state level. But my lay reading, just as a person reading what goes on, is that all of it is guidelines, none of it is mandates, none of it is prioritized. It's a generalized set of guidelines, and I'm asking, as an individual member of this board, that the emphasis be put on the mask-wearing and then the physical distancing. I'm asking that the physical distancing not take the priority over mask-wearing as the emphasis, not as a, as a, any kind of hard-line ruling, but just as the emphasis, so that, so that the mask-wearing, which is the harder part, I think, I think, the harder part of those two, kind of takes that priority.
Without chiming in on my opinion of it, just as an editor's perspective, what Tammy said at the beginning, if you were to read this, it sounds like the default is, cool, we're six feet apart, no masks.
That's my point.
But if you read further along, it clarifies that that's not, in fact, the intention behind that first paragraph. So, again, I am not looking to say it needs to be stronger against CDC, whatever, but it does, that is correct, that from a reading point of view, it doesn't sound like if you're six feet apart, your masks are not on, period.
No.
Unless they're asked.
To me, it's pretty clear, it's setting up the requirements that sets up the ability to have a periodic break from wearing masks. So it's saying, you can have a mask break if you are physical-distanced, as per the guidelines, and then you can go ahead and remove your mask. It's not saying, if you're physically-distanced, you don't need to wear a mask anytime, anywhere, right?
But if you read that...
It's specific, it's specific for taking a break.
But to Carol's point, Rob, I'm so sorry, it's hard to see you.
So, but the thing is, is that that's not, that's just not how it reads.
Can I just add a perspective? So the language throughout the entire reopening, not just here, was designed to be vague enough that we didn't have to return to the board with any change in recommendation, and it was designed to reference guidelines out there, knowing those guidelines might change. So we're creating, we're identifying the standard, and then within it, we're then going into more specifics about us, that we're, even if the guidelines change, this is where we stand. So what, where we stand is, because we could have students eight feet apart in the hallway, but we're saying, that's not good enough, we're absolutely wearing our masks in the hallway. So...
And will that student then be able to say, "I'm eight feet away, I don't have to"?
Well, Tammy, so that is like a student, the, oh my goodness, the student handbook. An adult is asking you to do that, and you need to comply. So that would just be a behavioral piece, not a mask piece, but just a simple behavior. We have dress code standards, we have requests to move to the side if we need to get by, we have students understanding our rules around emergency drills, and all of that is following the instructions of the adults, the employees of the district. So that's where we, that was why we chose to write it the way we did, and you can make a recommendation to make it different from COVID, and that's fine. I just wanted to give you insight onto why we wrote it in the way we did.
That's a good point, Gina, about the student handbook, and I appreciate being reminded of that. So that's terrific, and full stop on that point. I'm going to go to Carol's point about the remainder of this mask language, and how it too defines when you have to wear a mask as exceptions to social distancing. Here's when the students have to wear their face coverings, and there's a list. But that just leaves other times as, that's, those are the times you don't have to wear a face covering. I appreciate how difficult all this has been, I swear to you, I know how hard you've all worked, I know how many, I can only imagine how many voices have been pulling at you to do it this way and do it that way. I'm just going to, because I know that this is one of my last times to be able to weigh in on this as a school board member, I'm very unhappy with this language implying that the social distancing is the higher priority over the mask-wearing. I think they're equally important, and I think that the mask-wearing is what makes the difference, because I promise you, if I sneeze, it will go past six feet. We can have kids at six-foot desks, and one of them lets go a big sneeze, some of these sixth graders, my sixth grader was five foot eight, and the six feet will not be the impediment to their sneeze, it will be their mask. And I feel strongly that for the benefit of the culture and climate, for the benefit of the community understanding just how strongly we prioritize the mask-wearing, that a slight change in the grammar, in the punctuation, in the syntax, would communicate, would telegraph out to everyone that we mean it about the masks, and we will, we mean it about the breaks, and we mean it about the flexibility, we understand kids are learners, this is a difficult, difficult chore, et cetera, et cetera. But this is what we're aiming for, is not, we're not aiming for the physical distancing nearly so much as we're aiming as well for mask compliance, as much as humanly possible. But I won't say anymore, thank you for listening. I apologize for my phone.
So there's a other section here relating to daily symptom...
Oh, sorry, can I, I have a question about the mask language, sorry. Are we providing a definition anywhere of exactly what an administrator-approved face covering is, like a face shield or a neck gaiter?
It was elsewhere in it, this is just the one paragraph that was going to be changed, that hasn't changed, right, guys?
That is not.
Okay, okay. Thank you, I'm sorry.
You're welcome. No, they added that in the second round, after feedback from us and public about defining it.
Okay, thanks.
One more thing on mask-wearing, because I was just reading through the CDC guidelines, and somehow I feel like this hasn't come up. Are we considering clear face masks for the teachers of especially the youngest students?
Do you mean face shields?
Sorry, no, face masks.
No, no, they're face masks with plastic cutouts, Tammy, so their mouths can be seen.
Yeah, we've ordered a number of, not only the face shields, but the clear masks.
Excellent.
That will be a requirement for some classroom teachers if they have a student who, whose IEP dictates a clear face mask.
But it's just for the IEP? Because I would imagine that all kids that are learning to read can benefit from seeing their teachers' mouths.
I agree with that.
Yeah, well, right now, the, it's, the only requirement would be for students with IEPs, but that's definitely something that we can look at.
Okay, thank you.
Are you also seeking some sort of board action around the daily symptom monitoring language?
So, there was daily symptom monitor, the first piece, that daily symptom monitoring will be required of both students and staff, that first couple of sentences was part of our opening plan that was approved. There was feedback, they wanted to know what questions would be asked, so here are the questions. So technically, it's already been approved. This is such as, these questions might change as guidance changes. Our nurses, so this was provided, well, decided on from our advisory group, our school nurses are indicating they'd like to have a potential tweak to this as well. So that's why it says, similar to those below, we know these questions might change as information comes to us. So, so no, that technically has already been approved. The co-op board approved both of them, just so we were 100% clear, but it's sort of already been approved.
Has consideration been given to what will happen on those mornings when lots of people just like me, and I do mean that, will forget to submit this form?
Yes.
And also, many kids would, you know, again, symptoms that mimic the early symptoms of COVID, et cetera, can, I can picture the school nurse getting swamped and classes getting disrupted.
Yep. So the administrator is going to run the report at a particular time in the morning, prior, much prior to student arrival. The report will include a list of students whose parents have not completed the symptom monitoring form. That list will go to staff members who will start calling homes to get them to respond to these questions, because it could have just been, I forgot. We will be sending text alerts every morning, reminding parents, here's the link, please fill this out. But mornings can be really hectic and chaotic, and I have four children, so I fully understand that. So I would imagine there's a little bit of a learning curve with that. The other list would be the list that goes to our nurse, and that would be the parents who have said yes to any one of these questions, and this, it will also remind families, when they say yes, you are not to send your child to school, don't put them on the bus, don't bring them into carpool, and that list goes to the nurse. Those families will be contacted that day by the nurse, but not necessarily prior to the start of the school day, because what we're going to need to do with those families is get a better understanding as to what really is going on. Maybe it's that Johnny has, it's that time of year when his asthma kicks in, and there's a long history of asthma, and the medical professional's going to make the recommendation that he or she feels most comfortable with, knowing the family's medical history as well as the circumstances. The recommendation might be a quarantine, the recommendation might be, you might want to reach out to your, your regular medical provider, he or she might recommend a COVID test, we can't require a COVID test, but that might be the recommendation, and the family has that information, and we might say, and we'll need to have a quarantine. So all of that will take place during the day, not necessarily prior to arrival.
Any other discussions?
Thank you.
Any questions relating to the symptom monitor?
Is there a possibility that the daily check will be relaxed over time to not be a daily, like, interaction?
There might be. You know, as guidance changes, it's much easier to relax requirements than to put them in place. So we are going to go in this with the belief that this is going to work, knowing that there will be bumps, and it's going to be a challenge for everyone.
Because this symptom monitoring concept is based on state guidance, federal guidance?
So, I'm not sure if you've, you know, gone to an orthodontist appointment, or gone to any type of appointment, you go through this, you call, you answer the questions, and then you can enter. So we are following the guidelines to make sure that you can, that there's that attestation of health.
Self-reporting is, I think, part of the CDC guidance, I believe, I saw it there. I know it's being practiced in a ton of districts.
Done, thank you.
Yeah, Department of Health and Human Services has guidelines regarding screening of students.
Specifically, that DHHS update that came out on one, the day of one of our board meetings a few weeks back, part, the first little bubble, 100.0, it used to be 100.4, but the guidelines from DHHS changed to 100.0 that morning, so we're going with that 100.0.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd like to move on to our deliberation section to see what actions the board will take regarding superintendent's recommendation for the retained fund balance.
Oh, I think we missed a couple of discussion items, right?
Oh, we did, thank you.
Did anyone want to discuss the collaboration and the class sizes?
Under our agenda adjustments, we had a couple other things.
We had added the topic of collaboration. One of the things we're looking at now that we have firm numbers, are very close to firm numbers, is the balancing between the curriculum from a remote teacher to a classroom teacher at the same grade level to ensure that we're covering the standards that we need to cover, the standards that have been outlined in the Hollis School District curriculum. In looking at that, that has created some concerns for me, and I'm looking at a potential schedule adjustment that I'm currently talking to both principals about, where we would provide teachers time on Friday afternoons to do that work via their PLCs, their professional learning communities, and collaboration time. At the same time, we would roll buses early, which would allow our students to be home earlier on Friday, and the balancing act is that trade-off between, we feel this is essential to ensure that we're being uniform and delivering the curriculum, with allowing the teachers the appropriate amount of planning time and resources to do that during their traditional school day, because we are entering new territory, and it's something that we did discover in the spring, wasn't as consistent as we wanted. And then thirdly, it will also allow our custodians to do more of a deep clean every Friday, starting at approximately 12:30, 1 o'clock, whenever we move forward with that dismissal time. It's not 100% certain yet, we're still in discussions with our unions, we're still in discussions with Candy and Paula, but it's something that we would probably be making a decision maybe as early as this week. We will be having another meeting before we open up the school year, but I wanted the board to be well aware of that, we may have to have a meeting, or we could approve a motion that would allow the administration the flexibility to move to that type of schedule, because I think it's also going to be something that parents are going to need some assistance with planning. But at the same time, when I look at a week, and I look at the, already, the number of struggles families are having, I totally respect that, but at the same time, it's that balancing act, and we're one of the few communities that's returning to five days a week, full-time, in person, and I think that curriculum piece is really based on that. So that's what I'd like to talk about potentially, is a motion during deliberations, if the board felt, because then Candy and Paula could finalize what their Friday would look like. We are doing that, just so the board knows at the co-op level. So it does help, hopefully, some families with babysitting and things that would be needed. And at the same time, it will also help us with potential transportation costs, because to, for the co-op to get out and then run a multi, a second run for the elementary schools will potentially increase cost, which is, we're working to minimize that as well.
Are you looking to add a deliberation item tonight?
That would be greatly appreciated, if we could, you know, look at that, that would be very helpful, because I know that would give Candy and Paula, would give me a piece of information for the union... for the union discussions in the next couple of days.
I'd like to sense the board on that, if there's any objections. If not, we'll go with that and add that.
And just to be clear, it's a remote and in person would be done at the same time on Friday. So it'd be a half day for both, so they could collaborate in the rest of that day.
Yes.
Thank you for clearing.
Thank you.
So Andy, could you could you just clarify, what would the motion be?
To approve the administrator's administration's recommendation to have early dismissal on Friday afternoons for professional development and teacher collaboration.
So if I can, I'm going to go ahead and add that to the agenda under deliberations as the third item. Tammy, did you record that motion?
Most of it, to have early dismissal on Friday afternoons, to have professional learning and?
Teacher collaboration.
Collaboration, right.
Okay, let's do that.
I'd like to ask one more question about it substantively. This is a place where teachers who are remote learning teachers only or and teachers who are in person or however this is going to work out can also align curriculum, ensure that their pacing is in line week over week, ensure special ed and regular ed cross contact that's required is aligning. It's a time to catch up and make sure everything's aligned.
Correct, and it would be done probably because we have some remote teachers who cannot come into the building because of their own circumstances. So this would probably be a Zoom meeting on Friday afternoons. And it would also allow some time, because I can't imagine there won't be times when we need to Zoom with a parent about a child's progress or Zoom about a concern that's going on. So we're just building communication time as well, because I think that was something we heard from parents as well. You know, when can I touch base? When can I know my email is going to get returned, those type of things. And again, I I truly respect that it creates a little bit more of a burden. But I I think looking ahead and getting through this year from a curriculum standpoint, these these meetings will be essential. And what we'd be doing is, we traditionally had professional develop, I mean, we traditionally had PLCs in our schedule. So those would be Paula and Candy would be adjusting. So we're not adding new time, we're just moving it and allowing us to get out on Fridays for transportation issues. And and a big piece is the cleaning.
And this fits somehow in some magic fashion inside of our collective bargaining agreements. We're we're still within the working conditions, we're still within the time slots, all of it.
We we are, as you know, in in what's called impact bargaining with our unions. And we've agreed to this with the co-op union. And we'll be discussing it over the coming days with both Hollis and Brookline.
Thank you.
Is this the time to ask questions, or were we just trying to get it on the agenda?
I would rather do the deep dive questions.
Okay, I just wanted, I thought.
Deliberations with a live motion.
Yes.
Down there and second it if we could. Did we hit, is there another item that we need to under discussions?
No, I think Gina went through the the numbers for the grade levels, so that's done. I just covered collaboration, so I think we've covered that, and I think we're ready to go to deliberations.
All right, to see what action the board will take regarding the superintendent's recommendation for the retained fund balance.
So I move to retain up to the sum of $284,000 of school fund balance from the FY '20 school year.
Second.
Discussion.
Can you please refresh if we retain that much, what will go back to the taxpayer this year, please?
This year, they'll receive $200,000 to offset their tax rate. Typically, in a in a normal year, we usually return around $100,000. Some years, it's more, some years, it's less. And again, I think that the big point is if we went through the year and were able to get through on the budgetary items, then the whole 284 is re-voted on again next year. We typically keep about half that. So if we reduce that next year in August, the taxpayers would get whatever is left over from the FY '21 budget plus that revenue as well.
So if we vote to keep the 284, you know, if we approve Tammy's motion, the 200K approximately is still going back to the taxpayer right now?
Right now.
Great, thank you for clarifying.
And we can't spend the 284 without both the board's permission and the budget committee's permission.
Correct, thank you, Andy.
Any other questions relating to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five, zero, zero.
I got my hand up in time.
Thank you. To see what action the board will take regarding the superintendent recommendation for the updated language regarding face coverings.
I move to add to the return of school building plan 2020, 2021, the amended language relative to face coverings as presented in the board package tonight.
Second.
Discussion. So we already had a fairly deep discussion around the language itself. I did notice there were some some areas of support and possibly areas where members may not support. So I would like to kind of revisit this a little bit and get a sense for members who may be inclined not to support. And if there's any things that may that we may want to add. Because if I'm correct, Andy, we can tweak it for our own district, right?
Oh, yeah, yep.
So I I guess for the for the membership that is on the fence or has a sticking point with this, I would like to spend time talking about that. And if we can come to some area where maybe we can get get that support, let's let's talk about it. I think for me, I'll just get on the on the scoreboard right now. I'm generally comfortable with this language as it is. So I'm prepared to support this as it is. But I do want to give an opportunity for maybe other members that don't feel that way to have a decent debate over before we call the vote.
Just from purely a flow and editing standpoint, and to kind of address some concerns that others might have about the coverings. If you take the last paragraph and put it after the first one, it's a bigger emphasis on masks and then allows for, you know, the mention of breaks and student exemptions. That that may present differently, I think. So then it would be, as determined by CDC are not able to be achieved, all students and staff will be required to wear face covering when. And then list the areas that are when, including that last line of asked to do so by an employee of the school district. And then talk about breaks.
So Carol, just to make sure I understand, you're saying take the paragraph that says all students and staff?
Yep.
Make that the first paragraph?
No, make it the second paragraph. So take that, take that center section about teachers building in periodic breaks and the bullet about student exceptions, exemptions, and put that at the bottom.
At the bottom.
So then it talks about requiring to wear?
Yeah, I mean, we're not opposed to that, because I think we're getting the what we're trying to get across.
I agree, I'm just trying to?
No, no, and I think.
Create some.
No, I think that does it.
Collaboration there.
You know.
I can support that, yeah.
Yeah, we're, as an administration, we're fine with that. If you want to make that adjustment, then we'll put it in the plan. It'll be slightly different than the co-op, but that's fine with three separate unique districts. And we'll just make sure we we make that adjustment. So if that's how you want to move forward, we can support that.
Amy is good. Brooke?
That's fine with me. I think that I'm okay with it either either way. However, I still think it's unclear with the language. I I hear what our intention is when we discuss it from an administrative standpoint. But in terms of how it's written, it's unclear what it will look like in a classroom when kids are seated at their desks six feet apart. That it, I I I still do not know if in certain classrooms there's a possibility for extended periods of time without masks when kids are six feet apart. And I'm not saying that I'm not okay with that. I read over the CDC guidelines again, and that is in line with the CDC guidelines. But I just don't know where where our intention as a district is on that point by reading those guidelines.
Does that make sense? So basically, what the default is?
Yes.
So if that were to come to pass, where where it is creating some ambiguity in practice, could the board reexamine this in September or October or if it even, if it even presented itself? And could we tweak the language to address that ambiguity because it's becoming a problem?
Because there may be families that are are comfortable or not comfortable either way with their child being in a classroom where there's extended mask breaks. And and it leaves that possibility at this time.
My feeling is, is this is our language.
Yeah.
For our district. If we see that it's it's creating some ambiguity or some operational issues, this board can come to come together and alter it if we if if we got recommendations from the administration and so forth.
I think a couple of things to note. Number one, everybody's going to have training, teachers, students, everybody on what this means. So it, so going from words to a practice is going to be explained. Number two, to Gina's point earlier, the the way the language is written, it allows us to be very, very strict at the beginning, follow the data, and provide flexibility if the data indicates that flexibility. There's going to be some classrooms because of maybe individuals' health concerns that are 100% masks all the time, and those doors are going to be noted, no different than the peanut allergy or things that we we address in school systems. But this language with the adjustments we're making, I think, gives clear indications that in the first weeks of school, those breaks are more than likely going to occur out under the tents, going for a walk, things like that. If things go well, which we all hope, then there'll be mask breaks in the room. Based on if I'm the teacher and we were, this was my classroom, and we were all spread out, and my instructional piece was to work silently at your desk for the next five minutes, I might give a mask break. I personally would probably start, especially at the elementary rule, in an elementary room, maybe even go row by row. So it's very controlled, because you're going to teach kids these practices. And I, the language also allows our staff members to make those personal decisions, which I think they're quite capable of doing. So if I was sitting here and I'm at my desk and I notice that Candy is really struggling with her mask, I could say, Candy, you can take off your mask for a couple of minutes, because we've got plenty of social distancing, you know? And again, a minute later, I could remind her. Some of our students are going to struggle adjusting to their glasses. It took me a long time with glasses a mess. So I think the language provides what we need. We constantly communicate with parents. And I think what happens is, by having this language, you give the administration the authority to say, this is what's happening, this is what we need to tighten up.
So.
I would like to make one final comment, since I'm obviously the person who this is about. And my comment is this, when I spoke to this earlier, I was babbling because I wasn't clear on what I thought would be an improvement that I personally would like to ask for. I would like to ask for the consideration of this, even though I know it's a fly in the ointment. You want this language across the entire SAU. Students and staff in the Hollis School District will be required to wear an administrator-approved face covering as determined by the Centers for Disease Control, full stop. So what I'm requesting is that we would delete when physical distancing guidelines, and we would delete are not able to be achieved. It would just read, we will require to wear an administrator-approved face covering as determined by the Centers for Disease Control. The next two paragraphs in either order, I feel, achieve everything Andy just described, which I'm 100% in support of. Without, and they talk about CDC guidelines, they talk about teacher control over the or and staff control, employees of the school, et cetera. But by removing when physical distancing guidelines are not able to be achieved from that first paragraph, we place the emphasis on masks are the default. Thank you for your consideration.
I have no issue with that. To me, it makes sense, but I.
I'm just, I think the thing I'm just wondering is, does it come across contradictory than that we have a passage that talks about building in breaks and?
No, because it says as determined by the Centers for Disease Control. Will work, be required to wear an administrator-approved face covering as determined by the Centers for Disease Control. That means that that includes all the guidelines, or if you want to add the word guidelines, as determined in guidelines by the Centers of Disease Control, if there's a noun missing there. So that everything else flows from the fact that we're following CDC guidelines, which can change.
Concerns from the administration around that?
My only, my only concern was, and I can't, it's really difficult for me to hear you, Tammy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I feel like I'm shouting. So the first thing that you had mentioned, administrator-approved face covering as determined by the CDC. The CDC is not determining the administrator-approved face covering. So I don't, I know you just made an adjustment that I didn't hear. But I would just say that the, your first proposal, like, I would almost think it would be better to wear an administrator-approved face covering, period, end of story, and that paragraph. Unless your second suggestion?
My second suggestion, because I caught myself making a yet another mistake. So we'll be required to wear an administrator-approved face covering as determined in CDC guidelines. I was adding the word guidelines to the CDC part of it in order to ensure that what it's referencing is the general guidelines that we are responding to from the CDC.
So Tammy, something like in accordance with the CDC guidelines?
Right, or exactly.
The CDC guidelines speak specifically to the social distancing piece and not the masks.
Not the masks, that's what I was concerned about.
Yeah, in in the piece that I think is, you need to take into consideration, there were a number of research papers that came out in the last couple of weeks about the efficacy of certain types of masks, the gators in particular. And although this research hasn't been peer reviewed, it's still something that administrators are going to need to consider when they're making decisions. And that may not be reflective in the CDC guidance. So I think the language that we've introduced allows the building administrator the flexibility to look at what is some of the current research out there, so that they can make determinations on the masks and not have to wait for for a CDC report or guidelines to come out.
Then I would ask, I don't think this is a motion, I think we're just discussing possible things. I would ask them that the entire second half of that sentence be struck. The two other paragraphs reference CDC guidelines, they reference physical distancing, they reference different kinds of staff authority as Gina referenced, you know, mentioned through the student handbook. So you get my point. My point is that I would like, my personal individual voice is is to try to telegraph out to the school community that mask wearing is not a wishy-washy matter. And so I would ask then that students and staff of the Hollis School District will be required to wear an administrator-approved face covering, full stop. Teachers will build in, or if you want to reverse the paragraphs, whatever you want. I was looking for a way to keep CDC, et cetera, references and guidelines in order to make clear in that first sentence that, you know, we are being guided by the federal authorities and state authorities, but if there's, if that's going to come. I don't want to keep discussing this, because I think my point is clear.
Why don't you amend the motion with those changes? And we can discuss them specifically and get input from the administration on that amended motion. Does that make sense?
Okay, so.
So we have a live motion right now. I.
Right, which I said, so.
I believe we can amend that motion with the with the with the following amendments, and list what those are. I'm hearing that there's some changes in the very first paragraph. I'm also hearing that the order of the second and third paragraph be reversed into one.
That was to, if nothing was changing in the first paragraph?
Nothing else was changing.
Yeah, it was, it was a suggestion to kind of bring together the two points of view.
So then.
But if Tammy wants to propose something different, I don't, I don't necessarily think the paragraph order following her proposal makes a difference.
Okay.
Can I just say that since we passed the language that's on the paper in the co-op, I have not received one email, phone call, or communication about masks since then. I think everybody understands our intent is that masks are to be worn. And then if things get better, our intent is to loosen up the reins. If you want to change the language, that's fine, it's your policy. But I just want you to know I- But I just want you to know, I think there are clear expectations out there in the community around what, what our intent is.
Mr. Chair, you have really, I'm sorry, Carol, you have given me a chance to speak my mind repeatedly, and I very much appreciate that. I think you've taken a sense of the board and, you know, I imagine, I mean, the majority rules, it's fine.
Tammy, I was going to just kind of bring this up. You could simply go to that last paragraph and said, and have it say, when asked to do so by an employee of the school district, regardless of physical distance. And that will allow it to be.
I, I, I think, well, I appreciate your thinking about it that way, that, that, I think it's all right. I think the way, if we're going to vote based on how it is in the first paragraph, then my point is a meta-communication, it's not a technical one. So I think if the four of you are comfortable with this, then I appreciate the time that you've given me to bring this up.
I just want to respond and comment on the, we haven't had any, or the administration has not had any emails yet. But the procedures are not yet in place. And I, and I do think to Rob's point about whether or not we have the authority to reconsider the wording once things are in practice, because my experience in, in the world right now is that there is a lot of discussion in the community at large about mask wearing or not mask wearing, who wears a mask where, and who's going to comply, who's going to, you know. So I have the expectation when it's in practice that there will be more discussion than there currently is.
Okay, well, I, we have a live motion on the floor. I am also seeing no sponsorship to amend the motion.
Nope.
Therefore, I will call the vote. All in favor? All opposed? And obviously no abstentions, so it passes 4-1-0.
Mr. Chair, I'm reminding you that we have another motion that's been asked about the Friday dismissal.
I didn't get this.
She's reminding you of the Friday dismissal motion that we
Yes, yes, so I'll
I think I'm sitting near the speaker, I feel like I'm shouting, so I apologize.
So I, so I guess it would be to see what action the board will take regarding the superintendent's recommendation on.
Right. So I moved to approve the administration's recommendation to have an early dismissal on Friday afternoons for the purposes of professional learning, community, and teacher collaboration.
Second.
Okay, discussion, I have a few questions here. So that shortens the regular school day by how much?
In the neighborhood of about two hours.
Maybe a little bit less.
Two, two hours?
Yeah.
So we'll use that as a, as a working number. How does that impact our ability to meet our state guidelines of, you know, the hours that we have to deliver instruction within a year?
We have the longest school day probably in the state, so we will not have any concerns about meeting it. I think what it does is it provides the consistency so that when we complete those hours, we know we've covered the curriculum, which is why we developed the longest school day in New Hampshire.
Okay, and what kind of structure will be around those two hours? I mean, what is expected by the teachers to utilize those two hours?
It is, I'll use a grade level example. So there'd be a collaboration period for the second grade. And that would be the expectation that all teachers who are remote or in person, either on Zoom or in person, discussing that week's curriculum, where'd they get, what went on, what did you do, all of those type of things. What did you use for assessments? Kind of a look ahead as well as a look back. So, and that, that piece in itself is going to take probably an hour, if not over an hour. And then the, the professional development at our next meeting in September. Nicole Thomaselli will be here, we're going to be showing you all the different websites and things that we have identified for teacher professional development. So that if, if we were forced to go 100% remote at some point, we could do it more robustly than we did last year. Nicole has been working with Yolanda Flaminho, who's the assistant principal at the high school, and Amanda Zeller, who's, excuse me, Yolanda is at the middle school, and Amanda Zeller at the high school, so that we have one website. They are also constructing a page for parents to assist parents in tutorials of how these websites work and things. And then there would be administrative pieces to that regarding assessment. Because remember, a big piece of this will also be assessing where did our students actually end up? So what do we need to maybe go back, if I'm looking at grade two? What skills did they not get in the spring of grade one? That we need to now incorporate that we traditionally don't. And that might involve me going to my grade one team and saying, well, how do you normally teach this skill at the end of the year and borrowing and stealing some of the, the gold star lessons? So I think it'll really assist us in, in those aspects. It will also assist us because we do, we will be working with the professional growth team, which is in charge of our professional growth model, in discussing how we'll be doing evaluations of teachers on Zoom, and how we'll do, be doing evaluations of in-person learning. You know, it may be an administrator is zooming into a class that's in person, or maybe it's actually attending the class depending on numbers. So there are an awful lot of different things that are new to us that were discussed. But kind of to Brooke's point, until you go through something, you don't necessarily know what you don't know.
Yeah, yeah. No, I appreciate that, and my, my support for this is really, swings around those assurances of those two hours are structured and fully utilized. So I just want to emphasize that. With that, I'll yield to the rest of the membership for any other further questions.
Andy, you bring up an important point, the assessing of the student's ability to pace as closely as possible to the expectations we would normally have. I'm also interested in how administration and the teaching staff are working together to, I don't want to make this sound like I think people aren't doing their jobs at all, I really truly don't. But in, in such a Wild West kind of environment where we're all learning new skills at the same time together, how are we able together to assess how we're doing as an educational institution? And I don't mean that in, in any way as a negative question.
Yeah, well, I think Tammy, the, the first piece, let's talk about it in kind of student groupings. I think we're all aware that the state has required us to have IEP meetings and to work with those families in the first 30 days to really identify maybe gaps that were created, those pieces. So we decided in the school district, that was a good practice for all our students. So we'll be using some assessments that we currently use at a very shortened duration because our goal is not to necessarily test our kids to death. But it really will allow us to, to say, okay, we, we missed this concept in the spring because of remote learning to no one's fault. But we can now identify that this is a gap for the entire second grade using that example. And then we can build in because in many aspects of what we do in school, we're always assessing, locating gaps, and trying to correct things. So it's, it's a practice we're very good at. But instead of now searching for, say, five kids out of 100, it's now identifying, well, I'll say, a larger gap that might have been created because of how Zoom worked or all those factors that we faced in the spring. And then it will allow us to start to build in the catch-up. Because, you know, the, the get kids back where they belong is not necessarily going to be a one-year assignment. You know, in a lot of ways, that would be overload, that would forget the social, emotional pieces, all those concerns would come up. It may be something we're coming to you during budget season and say, okay, we've identified this gap, we'd like to offer a summer school for these students to any parent who's available and hire some of our own teachers. So this information, this data will allow Gina, Bob, and I, and Candy and Paula in the Hollis District to really have some good thoughtful questions about where do we want to go next? And at the same time, be able to come back to you as a board and say, these are the areas we've identified.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions on the motion?
A couple of questions on what will, how will this impact how a Friday will look? A typical Friday now, new Friday, if we could move forward with this. And in particular, is this a before, presuming it's an after-lunch dismissal?
Yes.
And sort of a side note for, you know, families that might be concerned. Is the school offering, or not the school, is the school space being utilized by before and after-school care still? And so will that be expanded into a longer after-school care on Friday? And is there potential for more capacity on Fridays? I, I don't know if that's related at all to this consideration.
Related, but it's, without the board's blessing on the new Friday, we don't know exactly what it would look like.
Uh huh.
So if, if you approved it and Brooke Line approves it tomorrow night, we'll talk to our after-school care. Our intent was to really hopefully get as many children home so that we could isolate sections of the building for cleaning, and staff would be working in, in different areas and have that flexibility. Because as you know, we've purchased some new technologies for cleaning. And, you know, to be able to go through with the wand and spray everything down and close it up for a weekend will be very beneficial. You know, and that's also going to lend itself to probably reduced use of the building by our own students and by the town at night. Because we are shifting some of our custodians to have more on during first shift so that the bathrooms are cleaned more frequently, things are wiped down, all the things that we did, you know, as part of our procedures. But now we're doing that with, you know, about 70% of the building in. So the, to give you the exact day, I don't know it yet because it wouldn't be until tomorrow that we'd tell Paula, well, she was actually watching from home tonight. But she'll be working on it. I do know that it works from a master piece, but they would have to, you know, get down to the nuts and bolts of some of the decisions around specifics that will occur in their buildings.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor on the motion? Opposed? And no abstentions, 5-0-0.
And the last one was to, to see what action the board would take regarding the superintendent's recommendation to approve two additional teachers. Again, I'm not sure I'm going to hire two. I just want to have that flexibility over the next 10 days, that if we have to.
So moved. Seconded.
Second discussion.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, just that, again, I'm not sure what the availability is of staff. It may be in one of those larger sections, we have to go with a para. It may be, there may be a retired teacher out there that would like to do part-time, you know, so they could, you know. We'll exhaust our resources to try to locate people. But I think having that knowledge for Gina and Bob and the principals who have been spending a lot of time working on the staffing will give them great flexibility so they're not, you know, I don't want them to sit there and say, I, I'm not doing that because of the budget. You know, I think, I think people are happy with our reopening plan. I think people support it. They knew, they know we're doing the best we can from a budgetary standpoint. And we'll do our, you know, our best to bring it in where we're supposed to.
I urge you to try to ensure that the remote learning classes are as small as we can feasibly make them.
Yeah, and that's part of it because, you know, the other piece is if for some reason a student had to transfer to remote learning or something, we don't want to start the year maximized, you know.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I'm, for me, I'm in support of this because it doesn't come as any surprise that we would need maybe additional resources given, you know, how the numbers fall out. And I think this registration by grade supplemental that we received is very helpful for me to see where the, maybe the potential issues might be that would, that would justify those resources. So I, I think this is really well, you know, presented, and it's easily for me to support this. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the motion? It's like 5-0-0.
We do not need a non-public.
We do not need a non-public. I will accept a non-debatable motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I apologize, I apologize. Could I ask a very quick question about the money we just voted on? Andy, do you anticipate higher, a substantially higher cost for energy this year due to HVAC, et cetera, separate from the H-Smart project? Operating costs, maintenance costs, et cetera?
That, as you know, has been discussed at H-Smart. The intent is to increase the airflow, which I do think is going to cost us in terms of using some more heating sources during the winter. The, the number that was conveyed to us today in our discussion was, we don't have any worry about the heating versus the expense until we hit 45 degrees. So I think we'll know a lot more from the H-Smart committee between now and, say, Thanksgiving, when we'll start to hit those temperatures most likely.
Good. I just wanted to make, I wanted it to go on record that the discussion has been extensive about using our air management resources to address this considerate, this concern. And it could have a significant budgetary impact depending on what the operating costs are.
I mean, there's the potential sitting here in August that we could, for the first time since I've been here, overexpend our funds and need to go into the unreserved fund balance. That's, that is a possibility based on the unknown factors. You know, we know everything we know today. What tomorrow brings, we have no idea.
Thank you.
At a 26, I'll accept a non-debatable motion.
So moved.
All in favor to adjourn? 5-0-0. Thank you, everybody.